Ms. Wellington, thank you so much and welcome. We apologize for the delay. We have a lot of folks that have a lot of questions, so be prepared. No, I'm just kidding. You did receive a list of the predetermined questions, and so I'll be asking those. And then I'll turn it over to my colleagues who might have some follow-up questions based on your answers, as well as some additional independent questions. And so, in the interest of time, we'll go ahead and get started. Why do you want to be Chair of the Planning Board? And what in your background qualifies you for the role?
Thank you very much for interviewing me. I have lots of ideas I'd like to share with you today. And if my answers get a little too long and detailed, I know you'll cut me off, so thank you. I want to be Chair to help advance the county's unique parks and planning mission, and to help achieve an even better quality of life for all Montgomery County residents. Under my leadership, the Planning Board will work tirelessly with all stakeholders to create a county where residents have more affordable housing choices, where people throughout the region and the nation and the world want to visit our exciting, dynamic urban centers, what I call "destination development," where all of our residents feel that their cultural experiences and heritage are respected, valued, and celebrated, and where our youth in every part of the county are able to participate fully and equally in a wide range of recreational activities. To meet these goals, the county needs to attract new companies and more smart economic development. Under my leadership, the Planning Board would work to increase collaboration with the other county agencies and to streamline development procedures so that we welcome businesses that wish to remain in, expand, or relocate to the county. I'm qualified for the job. In the last six months, I have met with over 100 businesses, individuals, and organizations. While I have extensive knowledge of land use and parks, I wanted to hear their concerns and perspective on land use in this county. I spoke to developers in Bethesda, Gaithersburg, and White Flint, biotech executives in Silver Spring and Shady Grove, environmental groups, civic groups, groups committed to social justice, equality, and opportunity for their members, heads of sports facilities, affordable housing experts, and even few more people. So, I know the job of Chair because I served on the Planning Board for eight years, and I served under four different chairs. So, I saw a lot of different management styles. As a board member, I was very active, and I participated, was closely involved with the budget, staffing, and a wide range of other management matters. I worked on 11 master and sector plans. It was a time of significant economic development, particularly in Silver Spring. There were so many things built, all the apartments now that you look at, the headquarters of Discovery, all of those were approved while I was on the Planning Board, and I'm proud to say I was one of the five votes to approve them. I also know the new zoning code, as you all know, effective this fall, and I believe that the code is better because of community and business participation, and that it will help us have a more simple development process. For parks, as to the county parks, I was initially appointed to the Commission in 1999 due to my advocacy for more youth playing fields. Over the subsequent years, I have expanded my interest to every aspect of parks operations, from playing fields to urban parks to education about our history, even when it is shameful. I wholeheartedly support the establishment of a permanent and permanently open and accessible Josiah Henson Museum and Educational Center. And I don't just support it. I serve on the Montgomery Parks Foundation right now, and I am co-chair for development on that very project. As Chair, this would be a top priority for me. I have the right temperament for the job, in the hearing room and out. I will reach out to people. I intend to have two hours a week where people could just stop by, same day every week, three to five, let me know what's on their mind, all within the ex parte rules, of course. I will listen, in the hearing room too, I will listen and assure courtesy and respect on my part and on the part of others. I can hit the ground running because I know and have longstanding and good relationships with the Director of Planning, the Director of Parks, and the staff. I've known the Director of Planning since before she was married. She was the acting director when I was on the Planning Board. Mike Riley, I've got to say congratulations. I was so happy about his appointment. I say kudos to the Planning Board. He's got a hard act to follow, but he was the right hand for that organization. So, congratulations to Mike for being appointed Director of Parks. I have broad experience at the NLRB for nine years, where I supervised attorneys, and I am an attorney, as a registered lobbyist on Capitol Hill. I was also general counsel to a 501(c)(3) charity. And I have experience with diverse groups. I'm interested in making sure that the people who aren't at the table get a fair shake. So, that was my interest in kids. I used my lobbying skills to work on the playing fields, and then when I got to the Commission, I worked on the Ball Field Initiative, which was for playing fields for all over the county. That initiative is still going. Fifteen years later, you approved the Ball Field Initiative in your last budget, and I'm very proud of that. Young Latino soccer players who want to play soccer on Sunday morning, I was part of the Community Use of Public Facilities Task Force on soccer fields in 2005 because, of course, we want people to play soccer on a Sunday morning. I mean, I went through, "Do you know where your kids are?" And if you find out they're at a soccer field, you're pretty happy about that. So, I worked to restructure Montgomery Women. I was president for three years. I took Montgomery Women from 80 to 150 membership. I recruited board members with geographic, ethnic, and age diversity, and that organization, under the leadership of Jennifer Russell and now Teddy Osias, is still going strong, and I'm very proud of that. It's a network group that everyone should be a part of. Because of this outreach, I have been supported by some of the groups that I have worked with. I am very proud that I have been endorsed by the J. Franklin Born Bar Association, the Association of Vietnamese Americans, and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I have copies of their letters if you haven't seen them, and that would be helpful. So, that's why I want to be Chair and why I'm qualified.
Well, thank you very much. You kind of touched on some of these with question two, but what do you feel are the most important issues facing the Planning Board? And what would be your top three priorities as Chair?
Thank you. The most important issues facing the Planning Board are modernizing the agency to be better integrated to the county government, have a better development process, helping the county compete with the District of Columbia and Northern Virginia for jobs and millennials, finding new housing types and locations for affordable housing. That will be a rare opportunity in the functional housing plan that the Board will do next year and in the Bethesda Master Plan. There should be sites there for affordable housing. Continuing to retool the Master Plan process, preparing for the new subdivision staging policy, fostering environmental stewardship through better stormwater management in our park system, looking at transportation projects in the context of a seamless transportation system, like the issue that we have at the Transit Center about the connection between the Purple Line and the Red Line. And finally, educating residents about the purpose of the Ag Reserve, to protect farmland, and about the contributions of the Ag Reserve's 561 farms and 350 horticultural enterprises, the contributions to the county's economy. My three top priorities, and this is on day one. Under my leadership, the Board will communicate a sense of urgency to the ongoing streamlining efforts. And I know what you're thinking, "We're already streamlining, so what would I do that would be different?" What's different is the focused leadership of the Chair. The priorities of the Planning Board do make a difference in how staff approaches its work. So, what would I do? It would be a number-one priority. There would be a sense of urgency because even though there's been some improvements from the people I talked to, from looking at the docket, the approval process is still too slow and too costly. And all of us, residents and applicants, will benefit from a more efficient and cost-effective process. Perhaps some of the money that's cost on the process could be put into the project. So, the Planning Board, as Chair, I would direct the Director of Planning, just as you all have done in the new zoning code, to implement the new calendar. And that does set deadlines for when different parts of the approval process have to be approved, 90 days for sketch plan, 120 days for some of the other things. And then what would I do? Then, as Chair and working with my doorboard, I would review weekly the status of pending approvals. So, this would be in a meeting with the Director of Planning, and oversee staff actions to resolve issues that are causing delay. In other words, we just start with the oldest cases first, see why they're so far behind, tell them, "Now, it's time to do something about it. What are we going to do?" If the Chair needs to make a call, make a call. If it's something in a different agency, because a lot of times that's true, maybe that does require the Chair's call, but move it along. My philosophy for all of these things is to identify and resolve issues early in the process. In my experience, these issues don't get easier to resolve when you wait or put them off. It's better to just go ahead and face it and make a decision. So, that's my first priority, but really all my priorities, the three, are of equal weight. Because my second priority would be to restore the productive collaborative relationship between the Planning Board and the County Council. As a member of the Planning Board, I came to appreciate the role of the Planning Board as a think tank for the Council, producing reports at the request of the Council, producing policy options. As Chair, I would make sure that the Planning Board offers the Council clear policies, priorities, and strategies to achieve and implement its land use, planning, and parks management goals. I would also make sure that once the Council makes a decision, the Planning Board would execute it to its very best ability, and I will meet with the Council anytime, anyplace to get the job done. My third priority, foster smart growth and compete with the hotspots in the region. Foster smart growth by focusing development in our urban and town centers. We need to compete, for example, with the 14th Street Corridor in the district where one of my sons lives. And I like to go there, too, because it's lively, with green and really fun restaurants that aren't expensive, and you can sit outside, and each restaurant is new and different. We need to do that, too. We need to create exciting, dynamic urban and town centers with green tree-covered parks, gathering places for community events, multimodal transportation, what they call "complete streets," new and different restaurants and retail, affordable housing, and startups to attract the entrepreneurial millennials. We need to be cool and international. So, how would we do this? Well, I have a couple of ideas, and these ideas would be dependent, of course, on the blessing of this Council. But I think that the Planning Board could do the legwork on a kind of summit where the county executive and the Council members would meet with Montgomery County's leading businesspeople and ask them to step up to provide private equity for a startup. And there are models for this, right in the district. There's 1776. In Chicago, there's 1871. I talked to a young entrepreneur who started at 1871 in Chicago, but he lived here, and I'm like, "How can we bring you back?" Well, one of the ways we could bring our dynamic young people back is through things like these startups, and we do have the people and the means to do that. That's one idea. A simpler idea is simply to adopt a park. This is what they're doing in New York. I have another son who's a schoolteacher, and I go up to New York City a lot and go to his second-story walk-up. And believe me, he doesn't have a yard. And there are so many pocket parks in New York now with trees and greenery and tables and chairs that you can move around, and they've been adopted. They've been adopted by the local civic group that lives there. They've been adopted by businesses. This would be cost-free, and it could make a big difference. And we might also want to look at doing open spaces that are not under our control but are under the businesses' control because they'll do better business if the places where they are working and they have their jobs are attractive. So, those are my three top priorities.
Thank you. And what is your understanding of the role as Chair? And I think you've touched on this as a part of some of the things that you were focused on as well, but what is your understanding of the role as Chair as it relates to other members of the Board and to the County Council?
I'm going to start with the Council because that's the most important relationship, in my opinion, although they are both very important. As I said, it would be one of my top priorities to establish a collaborative relationship, one where we could share ideas, talk about our priorities. I would make sure, as I said, that I kept the Council informed on anything that was of any significance to this Council, and do it way in advance. Again, start early. The Chair is the face of the Planning Board to the Council and the person tasked by the Council to oversee its work program and to appear before it whenever needed. And of course, the Chair brings the directors and staff. It is the job of the Chair to make sure that the agency is fulfilling the work program set by the Council, and, as I said, to keep the Council informed. As Chair, I would meet frequently with the Chair of the Fed Committee and the other committee members, as well as any other Council members. My goal for my relationships with Council members is this: Work together, produce through staff an excellent work product for the Council, and get results and more. Develop relationships of trust and mutual respect. The three Cs: Communicate, communicate, communicate. And as for the Board, it's a similar situation. I'd do similar things. The Chair is the Board's leader, and it's the role of the Chair to keep other Board members well-informed, because after all, they're working part-time, and the Chair is working full-time, on internal matters, on pending issues, on development issues in general, I mean, what's happening out there, and to consult with Board members on these matters. The Chair works to find consensus among the members because the Board is more effective when it speaks with authority and consistency. As Chair, I would reach out to my colleagues, listen to them, and incorporate their ideas. So, that's my understanding of the role of the Chair of either Council and the Board.
Now, how do you think that we should deal with future development and redevelopment issues? And what do you think the Planning Board's role is in supporting existing communities in that same respect?
Very good question. The county's smart growth policies and master plans make it clear where growth must go, in our urban areas and our corridor cities. As Chair, I would encourage the maximization of growth in those areas and also begin to implement ideas that are under the control of the Planning Board, like adopt a park. For transportation, I support all of the Council's priorities contained in its priorities letter to the state of March 18, 2014. In particular, I strongly agree with all of the Council's recommendations for supporting and expanding our metro system for the Purple Line and the CCT, the prioritization of transit. We need a regional perspective and a transportation system that will facilitate better regional connections to airports, universities, and other live, work, and play venues. In addition to the projects in the priority letter, I support the county-wide corridor's functional master plan for BRT. I support completing our bike network utilizing the county-wide bikeways functional master plan that was approved while I was serving on the Planning Board. And I support bike share, car-sharing services, and better pedestrian access and connections because I think we need better feeder systems to our transit. I'm also interested in the most recent development where there's a new Metro extra bus. I was talking to somebody in the Transportation Department. It just started running in March, but it's called the K-9. It's running now from Fort Tonton to the FDA, and apparently, so far, ridership is very high. We have to look at all of our options. I will support smart growth and enhanced transportation while also protecting the neighborhoods that are the backbone of Montgomery County. The policy of neighborhood protection is embedded in our master plans, in the subdivision staging policy, and in our new zoning code, and I embrace it for all of our residents because the county now has a great variety of neighborhoods. There's not one kind of neighborhood, and we must encourage that variety. We have neighborhoods within our dense urban areas, high-rises within walking distance of Metro, new townhouses and small WWII garden apartments. We must support our neighborhoods in the way that suits each neighborhood's special dynamic. All neighborhoods should not be the same, but all should be protected as they evolve. I am particularly supportive of preserving and protecting existing affordable housing stock throughout the county and working to develop mixed-income housing types that can be built in all of our urban and town areas. That's why I was saying I'm interested in the functional housing plan and what's going to happen with the Bethesda Plan, because one of the things we need to do is to disperse affordable housing more evenly throughout the county. I am also very aware of the increasing tension between economic development and an overburdened infrastructure, transportation, and schools. In my view, the use of the development districts in the subdivision staging policy is an excellent way to address these issues, since you can bore down to a particular community. I also support the new test for the adequacy of transit. Protection of neighborhoods, however, does not mean that there should be no change. In Montgomery County, we manage change through a public process, and the Planning Board and the Council make their decisions in public. It is important to listen carefully to all stakeholders and to respect and understand all perspectives. But then, it is time to make a decision. Every public official must make tough decisions about what is in the best interests of all the residents and what will best serve the future. I look forward to making these decisions in a fair and balanced way. So, this is how I would deal with development and redevelopment in the existing communities.
Thank you very much. Now, you know many of the Council's land use decisions require balancing the community's desires for further economic development, as well as dealing with neighborhood protection, as well as enhanced environmental protection as well. What are some of the factors that you'd look at in trying to achieve a reasonable balance between all of those particular issues?
In individual cases, in a regulatory situation, I will first look at the zoning on the property. I will then look to see what densities, uses, and heights are permitted. I will then look at the applicable master plan to see if there is a specific recommendation for the property and to see what the county's approved goals are for that area. Staff will then check to see if there are any environmental constraints that are placed on the property, i.e. existing environmental constraints. Are there wetlands? Are there particular issues with forest conservation? Is the property in a special protection area, and therefore, approval requires a water quality plan? Is there a historic property on the lot? You look for all the different -- you have to enforce the rules that are set by this county and this Council. Staff would also check to see if the subdivision staging policy is relevant to the individual project, and if so, whether the project is a candidate for a development district or whether it just proceeds on its own. Having done this, it's much easier to sort out an outcome. A landowner has a right to build on his property within the limits of the zone with respect to height, density, and uses. The yield of the property, however, may be constrained by the master plan and the other factors I have mentioned. The timing of the development may be constrained by the subdivision staging policy. The goal is to permit the property owner to get the best and highest use of his property while complying with reasonable restrictions that forward broader environmental, community, and preservation goals. So, that is how I would weigh these factors.
And now, what is your view of the Planning Board's overall responsibility for our park system? And what do you see as the Chair's role when it comes to the park system? And I know you already had some glowing remarks for the park system as well.
Yes. The park system is the happy part of being Chair of the Planning Board. I was the lead commissioner on all parks matters when I served for eight years because I came onto the Commission because of my interest in parks and playing fields. And now, since 2011, I have served on the Montgomery Parks Foundation. So, parks are a great love of mine and a great focus. The Planning Board develops and manages the 35,000-acre park system through the Director of Parks. It approves land purchases, new park facilities, and parks fees. The Planning Board hires the Director of Parks and approves the Parks Department operating budget and CIP. The Director of Parks is responsible for the day-to-day management of parks. I want to take the opportunity, as I already did, to thank Mary Bradford for leaving our parks in far better shape than they were when she arrived, and of course, the new Director was indispensable, too. The Chair's role is to work with the Director of Parks and the rest of the Board to shape the Park Department's priorities, always safeguarding the core functions. Under my leadership, the Board would set certain priorities: Keep fees low and/or add scholarships to make sure that all of our kids have the same sports and nature opportunities in every part of the county; keep facilities and opportunities to recreate comparable throughout the county; prioritize Josiah Henson Park as a destination park in the region; energize and prioritize in the CIP the new Urban Parks Initiative, which is in there now; add walking and bike trails that enhance open spaces. And as I said before, in the adopted parks, the idea would be to add trees, landscaping, and places to sit, movable chairs, tables and chairs that you see now in New York and around the country. Make the department more nimble. I think the parks could use design-build more frequently. They barely ever use it, and it would be much faster and hopefully less expensive. Continue the environmental stewardship programs that are now in place. And thank and encourage, and always pray that they will keep coming, the almost 12,000 volunteers who work in our parks every year. We don't always recognize what the budget might look like if we didn't have them and/or what the parks might look like. Add youth education programs to the parks, which is something that has been proposed through the Youth Engagement Matters. So, those are my parks priorities.
And now, as you know, this position carries with it obligations for attending meetings, making appearances, and all kinds of other activities that involve both weekends and evenings as well. Will you have the time commitment, will you make the time commitments required to fulfill the elements of that role as the Planning Board Chair? And then also, have you engaged in these community outreach activities before? And if so, just an example or two.
Yes, absolutely. I'll make the time commitment. I actually like going to these things, and I've already been doing it for a number of years. I have the time. My children are grown, and this would be what I do. So, yes, I would do that and more. As I said earlier, I've already met with 100 people in the last few months, and just think what I could do in four years. As for community outreach, I have done extensive community outreach in a variety of ways. But what I would do as Chair is I would schedule Board meetings at different locations throughout the county to make it easier for residents to attend. I would improve the experience of listening to the Board online and testifying in the hearing room, and I would explore the use of "get out the vote" techniques to reach out to our citizens. And some of this is already being done now with the digital media that the Commission's using. The Commission needs more bilingual employees, and as I said before, I'll have an open-door policy. But I sometimes think that maybe the most important thing is to communicate to citizens that you will listen when they talk to you, that you will respect them and not judge their views so that they don't feel shy about speaking up. And I think that's something that we can do through And I think that's something that we can do through going out to meetings and just listening. So that's what I would do.
Well, thank you very much. And are there any potential conflicts of interest of which we should be aware?
No. The job will have my undivided attention and loyalty.
And then, are there other points about your interest in the chair that you'd like to call to our attention at this point?
Well, I guess I've already had a lot to say, but I have just a little more to say, which is, my entire life, I've been interested in new ideas, new places, and reaching out to make new friends and see things from their perspective. There are new ideas and attitudes coming from our ethnically diverse residents and from the millennials, and we need to act on them. These groups seek diversity. They create their own careers. They use transit. We need to create more and better places for these groups to live, work, and play. And as I said, I'm also interested in these startups, job-creating things, while continuing to offer a range of choices of housing, office space, and retail. After all, this is a really big county, and we've got room for everybody. I believe that I can be of service to this council and this county in this endeavor, and I would be honored to be appointed by this body as chair of the planning board. So thank you. But I know that's not the end, but...
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there more that you wanted to add?
No, no. I just mean, I understand you...
Oh, yes, yes. No, there's a number of lights that are on, and we'll start with Councilmember Leventhal.
Ms. Wellington, thanks very much. That was a very comprehensive presentation, and we appreciate your preparation and all the work you've done in the community, and we thank you for applying for this important job. You -- I have two questions I've been asking every applicant. You've addressed both of them to a degree, but I wanted to ask you explicitly: Do you support the preferred local alternative for the Purple Line, including the use of the Georgetown branch right-of-way?
Yes, I do.
And you did address this already, but what is it specifically that you feel the county should do to maintain our agricultural reserve, and what do you view as the planning board's role in that regard?
Well, the purpose of the ag reserve is to protect farmland and to encourage farming and ancillary-type farming uses. And I think it's very important for the planning board and any decisions it makes to look and see if that balance is being met, because it is a hard balance. There's a lot of pressures on the ag reserve, as we all know. So yes, that would be my emphasis, remembering always the purpose of the ag reserve and upholding it in the different decisions that we make.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Leventhal, Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Wellington, for your service to the county, and your work on the planning board for eight years, and your leadership on parks especially. I'm asking these questions of everybody as well, and that is, what is the most valid criticism that you have heard of the planning board, and what would you do as chair to address it?
I think the most valid criticism that I have heard is the inability of the planning board to innovate, to make changes, that, you know, I mean, how long has the streamlining been going on? I mean, people were streamlining before I left the commission in 2007, and yet, are we really where we need to be? So what I would do is what I just said: Light a fire under the employees and the agency, and I say that with love and respect. I know the staff, a lot of them very well, and I know the employees, but every organization, especially one that big, really needs leadership and direction.
Thank you. And what do you think would be a reasonable starting salary for the new planning board chair, and how do you think the council should go about determining what it should be?
Well, of course, that is your decision. I did see what the salary is, you know, in the application. It should be on parity with what you pay other people, given the workload and all. It's a very hard job. It takes up a lot of hours, but there's no overtime. I understand that. So I think you should, you know, I'm sure you will be fair about it. So I -- that's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Andrews, Councilmember Berliner.
Ms. Wellington, I don't have a question. I just have an observation, that rarely have I seen someone who was focused like a laser from day one on the desire to serve in this way, and the disciplined way in which you have gone about presenting yourself, your ideas, and the support. Really, I think it does reflect how you would approach the job in that same sort of disciplined, focused way. So I commend you for those qualities, and thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very, very much. And yes, what you see is what you get, so yes.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Berliner, Councilmember Branson.
Thank you. Ms. Wellington, it's good to see you again. I've also been asking everybody the same question, and so here it goes. There, for the last two or three chairs, they've only served one term. So, you know, my question involves trying to get the applicants to explain to me what they think accounts for the willingness to only serve one term when it's possible to serve two, and whatever it is you believe accounts for that, how would you change it?
Thank you. That's an interesting and tough question. I did serve under some of the chairs who had only served for one term, but, well, first of all, I would say there's been a lot of change in the last few years, and that sometimes it's been hard for these chairs to be the right fit for dealing with that change. You do have to really be able to bob and weave. And I also, I think that sometimes there hasn't been the rapport with the council that there needs to be, that tempers get frayed, and that's -- that can't happen. That doesn't work. It's very important that there be collegiality, respect, and then also that the planning board always understands that it must be responsive to the council. But saying that, I still can't really give you reasons for individual decisions, but that's the way I see it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Alrich.
A couple of questions. First is, if the planning board were to bring over a plan where we knew that the board had substantially changed staff recommendations, how would you feel about the staff being able to discuss their recommendations, their original recommendations with the council, if I wanted to know what the logic was behind their suggestions?
Well, I'm assuming there that it was, you know, it was a written staff report, and so that's part of the record, and certainly any council member is free to ask questions about that. And also, the planning board is free to reject staff recommendations. I do think, though, that if that does happen, that the planning board then needs to ask staff to prepare a full and complete rationale for the new decision.
How do you feel about the CR point system, and what, if anything, would you change?
Certainly, that's something that I've talked about a lot with this council. I -- and I note that at the end, when you all approved, the final approval of the zoning code that you all mentioned, that there was still, I particularly remember President Rice saying that, still some concern about it, but didn't want to hold up the passage, which is certainly understandable. I think that is evolving, and the reason I say that is, in preparing for this, as I said, I did a lot of reading on the subdivision staging policy, and I saw there that many of the factors, and many of the kinds of things that I've been, not just me, but some people have been saying we need to look at, like land for a school site, libraries, the kinds of amenities that support new development, are in a development plan. If you do a development district, I'm sorry, a development district, all those things are in there, and I think that's all to the good. And I think we might want to get a little more cosmic and relate those two things, because it seemed clear to me that in White Flint, the development community was concerned about public amenities there, because, as I understand it, they had a development district. So just working through this, I think, is important. But I have supported, and I do support that there, if you're going to give an amenity, make it something the community really needs and wants, and that will really serve this county.
When -- we're trying to deal with the shortage of affordable housing in the county, and when we make zoning decisions or master plan decisions, what's your view of how you would treat existing, what they call naturally occurring, affordable housing?
I support, to the extent possible, maintaining that housing. Now, remember, when you do that, you do have the issue of it deteriorating, and maintenance, and making sure that, you know, it's meeting the code and it's still really good housing. So how do you balance that? I've been thinking about this for Bethesda, because there's two areas of naturally occurring affordable housing by Battery Lane and then also behind the Giant. And I think what I would be thinking about is looking for more housing types that could possibly be added to that land, but then keeping that housing and seeing if that can't be renovated. One of the things I'd like to do, as I said, I've met with a lot of affordable housing people, is get a group of builders from the region and sit down with them and say, what kind of housing types have you been doing? What do you think would work here, and what do you think would be cost-efficient? And particularly because I think we're learning that affordable housing, to be really affordable, ironically, is not the high-rise housing, that, I mean, I'd have to see the actual numbers and the economics of it, but that in fact, it's more like seven-story housing. In some ways, that can be added to a community a lot more easily. So I think there's opportunities for affordable housing, but we really have to dig in on it.
My last question is, you've had experience on the planning board before, and you've dealt with inter-agency turf battles, and a lot of us are talking about, not just streamlining, but where functions belong. Do you have any thoughts on reorganization and, you know, what you might do differently in terms of where responsibilities and decision-making and enforcement lie between the planning board and the county agencies that interact with the board?
I think we do have to get rid of a lot of the duplication. I don't know about all of it. I know, for example, that record plaits are reviewed by both the planning board and DPS. We need to make a choice on that and make things simpler, because, and then I've also heard, you know, that in the environment, the planning board weighs in, and then DEP weighs in, and, you know, some applicants, and we don't agree, the two organizations don't agree, and applicants don't know what to do. We need to resolve that. As I said, I know a lot of the people in these agencies. I respect them. I'd like to sit down with them, with the help of staff and recommendations, and see what we could do to get rid of some of the duplication. That would be one thing. Also, to make sure that everybody's showing up at the DRC meetings, and that they're ready to actually make a decision. I want to create a development desk, you know, one person, I have this list of reforms, a development desk where one person is there, and that's the person that an applicant goes to and says, you know, what am I getting myself into? What do I have to do? And lays out everything you need to do. And I think we also need to work on the website, because I read that website, and I guess what I learned is I won't be building in Montgomery County anytime soon. So I think we could do better with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Alrich, Councilmember Navarro.
Ms. Wellington, thank you so much for applying, as well as for all your public service. I mean, you have such a strong track record of serving our community. And the question that I've asked every applicant has to do with, obviously, you know, we do have a county that demographics show that it's getting older. As you had mentioned before, also, there is this desire to attract also millennials. And of course, we have an immigrant community who's been growing steadily for the past 30 years, and what would you do to improve the communication with all of these different sectors of the community, so that they can be more present and participate in many of the land use deliberations, and also, obviously, give us, you know, the feedback necessary for us to make decisions that reflect the views and the desires of all of these members of our community?
Well, as I said, I have an, I will have an open door two hours a week, but I'm realistic enough to know that that doesn't mean that people from all these different communities will necessarily find their way to my door. So I think you have to go to them. And actually, in working on the zoning code, I attended a lot of the Glenмот area civic meetings, and they're well-attended. And I think getting out to those meetings, and, but going with staff where you can actually write down all the ideas that people are saying, because they feel freer there. So I think that's one thing. Maybe I'm old-fashioned that I actually want to lay eyes on people and hear what they say, but I do. And then that word gets spread. You know, I mean, I then got emails from people asking me questions. I've got, you know, I got emails from people in all parts of the county about the zoning code or whatever, because now they had a name and a face. So I would do that. And I would also, I want to explore this idea of get-out-the-vote techniques. The only trouble is, for get-out-the-vote, sometimes you have all those phone calls endlessly if you voted yet, and we don't want to do that. But we want to identify people. We could get information about the groups and then find ways to reach out to them. I think it's really very doable. It's just a matter of focus.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Wellington. I don't see any other lights on, so I want to thank you for your prior service, and thank you for your willingness to continue to serve in this new role. And so we should be making our decision within a week, and so we'll be in contact. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you all very much.